I think there's the other part.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the mayor and board of commissioners, for August the ninth, 2016. Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since the town administrator is not in attendance, I will confirm the roll call. He will be up in a little bit, but I'll go ahead and confirm the roll call. Commissioner LaChiere.
Here.
Commissioner Althanreth.
Present.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Shepard.
Here.
I'm in attendance as well. Let the record reflect that all board members are now in attendance. Will you please bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun and our citizens. I pray that you continue to watch over our town, God, our elected board members, as well as those that serve on our volunteer boards and their families. I ask that you please watch over our police officers and our police officers throughout our nation, as well as those in our armed forces that are serving overseas. Please continue to guide us in a Christ-like way and be with us as we leave this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
First on the list is a debt service tax discussion, which is Commissioner Warnock.
Yep, so we're actually moving that up.
Yeah.
On the agenda, sorry.
Moved it up, sorry.
Get that out of the way and then go into the street stuff, because it's like a continuous list of street things after that. The debt service tax discussion, so we're, we've been discussing the, sorry, we've been discussing the debt service tax. Of course, my kid's asking about kitten again. The debt service tax over the last few weeks, and there were some things that we didn't intend to happen, that we're, we're going to at least be able to rectify some of those tonight. Some of the other ones, we're going to, you know, there's a little bit different scenario also, and we're going to, I think we're going to need a couple of questions answered before we can come up with the final solution on that one. So that was, we'll be asking those questions, but we won't have an answer on that tonight because we don't know the answer, at least to the one question. So what we've kind of done is looked at the debt service tax and determined that there were a couple, there's a couple of groups of things that happened with this. We had a pretty clear intention with the tax, but there was a couple of side products that came out of it due to some legacy property lines and such. So obviously, like a 56-square-foot parcel of property, we didn't intend to hit individually with, you know, a $384 tax. So, you know, this is a, it's a new flat tax assessment on properties to help cover the debt that the town's incurred over multiple years. The, we tried to keep the amount equal to what people were already historically paying on utility bills, just as a matter of, you know, making it easier for people to digest, I suppose. But the tax itself, the assessment itself, is actually a, for a different set of goals than what a lot of people think it is. So what we did is we rolled residential trash collection into the property tax assessments. And we rolled, because of that, we didn't have enough money to cover debt payments on loans and things like that, such as town hall, which, you know, is a loan that dates back to 2002, the water tower, which is about the same timeframe, things like that. So what we did is we came up with a flat assessment to apply to all the properties in town. Now, what we didn't intend was that if there was a tiny little sliver of property due to a legacy line, that, that would be covered in that. So the first thing we want to do is, because that's a pretty easy thing to address, we want to address that. And so I want to make a motion that we put together a resolution that will declare the assessments will be applied to any taxable property located within the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun, which can support the construction of a primary residence in accordance to the town zoning district in which it is located. Furthermore, the town will take the necessary steps to update the county's tax roll to reflect these changes, and will reimburse any property owners affected by this change upon proof of payment.
Structure.
Did I say, I said structure, didn't I?
No, you said right.
Did I say primary residence? Primary structure. I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this proposal? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, Mr. Kather, we've, that obviously doesn't apply to yours, but we've been, you know, discussing, you know, how you're affected by this. And I guess one of the questions that we have is, do you want that property remain within the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun?
No.
Okay, so you would be happy if that property was not located within the incorporated limits?
I would come up and dance in front of you.
Okay. So that was a-
And that's not a reflection on the values of the town or anything? It's my personal, you know?
Okay.
I, I do a lot of hunting.
Okay.
Travel around a lot. If you've ever been up and down Stevenson Road tonight, you'll see oodles of deer. When I bought that, it was my intention to give the poor creature someplace to live. I don't hunt there, and I have some magnificent pictures of the last two months.
Okay.
And I feared getting involved with the town, because I said, somebody's going to come and tell me to mow. Has it been mowed in years? So it would, please be great.
Okay, so we've got to go back and-
Not, not from a monetary standpoint.
Yeah, we've, well, we're going to have to, I mean, I wanted, we were hoping to get a little bit more of an answer for you before the meeting, but because we didn't have the time, because I didn't have the answer to that question, we're going to have to go back and, you know, take a look at that. But I think, you know, there's, we're going to have to look and understand what that means, I suppose, so we'll get back to you with an answer.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. So we, I mean, just know that we are looking at it, trying to figure out how we're going to address it. So, okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to?
I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Warnock for putting in all the work to look at all these properties, because it is a lot of properties that he needed to go through to, to check out the ones that could potentially benefit from not having this upon them, so.
And it's, it's been a joint effort. I mean, you know, it's been, you know, Calvin and I working on this, and then, you know, talking, of course, with-
I would just like, Mr. Jackson, are, are you clear on how that affects your property?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, you've been here with us for a few weeks.
Yes.
We want to make sure that you understand that, you're clear on it, and how it affects you, and that you're okay.
I had, I had kind of hoped that, I appreciate the work that's, that's been put into, and I have a, I have a spider property. I had kind of hoped that unimproved properties, I kind of felt that the debt service needed put back on the utility bill, because they're the ones that are being supplied to serve. They're using the services, they're, they're using the water, they're using the sewer, they're, they're having trash pickup. You know, I have-
Well, one thing we, we think got mirrored.
I, I appreciate any, any relief on this at all. I will say that, from, just from my, if you're asking, I, I had kind of hoped that-
Right. Well, I just, I just want to make sure, bottom line, is that you understood how it affected that little-
Yes.
Little piece of property that you originally came into us.
May I, may I ask a question real quick, and this is no bearing on my property? A number of years ago, during the annexation of the property of Cross River, there was some talk about charter changes. Are you familiar with this, Mr. Beck?
That's all before my time.
Oh, yeah, but, but there was, there was talk, and I kind of had not been around for a lot of reasons, about an agricultural zone within the incorporated limits. Was anything ever done with that, as far as a tax, a less of a burden of tax?
No, not that, not nowhere, no. Now, well, one thing I will tell you that we did, is we did make some changes to our fee schedule in relation to people and on agricultural use during certain repairs or upgrades, that the fees would be reduced, because the code requirements are not as stringent on agricultural as they are on commercial.
That was for Jeff's benefit, he farms all that land.
Excuse me?
That was, my question was for Jeff's benefit. It's all corn, it's all he does.
Right.
All right. Is, is that the end of your?
Yeah, I think that we're still, you know, I mean, this is still something we're working through, all the details of, but I mean, at least we know that we've identified this as something that we needed to do. And so, I mean, this doesn't actually change this tonight. What it does is says that the next meeting, hopefully, I believe Calvin, probably the next meeting, we'd be looking at introducing a resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, so the next meeting will come forward with a resolution on that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Warnock.
Commissioner Althanreth, are you ready for your report?
Okay, we, we have several things, but they kind of combine, and Calvin and I were working on this before we came upstairs. There's, as you see on the agenda, there's three items, Ryan Drive road repair, Valley View roadway repair, and Mason Run stormwater outlet repair. We all know what happened up on Ryan Drive, the, the water connections that broke, and they all broke at one time, and caused what I call the ant farm effect of water. And so it's been a good year, and we've seen that the road has pretty much settled all it's going to, and we're going to be ready to go back in there and top coat that road. That's just a little background on the Ryan Drive, Valley View roadway repair. This is the most recent water main break we had down there, that has caused some extensive damage that we need to make a repair to. And Calvin, would you give us a little more detail on the Mason Run stormwater outlet repair? What were you doing there?
Do you want me to start with the descriptions on Louise Court, Ryan Drive, and you want me to do all three of them?
Well, if you'd prefer, like I said, we kind of know what happened up on, on Ryan Drive, and why, why we're going back up there. Valley View was the most recent damage down there, but I don't think anybody really knows what's going on with Mason Run stormwater down there. I haven't even had a chance to get down there since it was brought to us about a week ago.
Right. What this entails is a, in Summer Hill, and let me back up and say, whenever you see storm drains in a street, that water is collected from the street, and it goes somewhere. In many cases, in our newer developments, it goes to stormwater retention or detention ponds. In other communities or in other circumstances, it goes directly out to streams or creeks, as is the case in Summer Hill. So when you make the left onto Mason Run off Pearl Street, there are the first couple of storm grates up there convey water from the street to the left, down towards the stream that's on the left-hand side of Mason Run, and those pipes come out the side of the yards, or in between two properties and an easement, and the pipes come to surface out on the side of that embankment. And then from there, it goes through some riprap and other engineering things that are put at the foot of the pipe, so that rainwater coming down under volume doesn't erode the ground around it. So in this particular case, the riprap is okay in there, but there's been a lot of sedimentation. If you, and it predates some of the elected officials, but when Summer Hill was paved back in the early 2000s or so, that road was paved right on, in many cases, right on dirt, very similar to Ryan Drive, where the pavement was just put right on dirt. And that road did not hold up. So all that degradation of that blacktop, as you remember, was going somewhere when it rained, and where it went was down stormwater drains. And in this case, it went out and got all hung up in the riprap and, and ballast and stone that was down there, and it created a mound in front of the pipe. And so now, when the water drains out of the pipe, instead of it being able to flow freely down to the stream, it collects in this pool of high mounds of sedimentation and debris, before it breaches the top and then goes down to the stream. So quite simply, what we really need to do is, it's, it's a more, it's a more elaborate way of when you have to go in and, and clean stormwater drains in the street itself and get the sedimentation out, we just have to clean it out in the discharge pipe. And it's a little bit above and beyond the ability of our people and equipment to do. So while we were entertaining the idea of a contractor coming in and doing Louise Court and Valley View, we asked the engineer to give us probable cost analysis for having somebody come in there and remove all of that out of there, bring it basically back to its virgin surface, and then put some of the elements of stormwater management control back in. So I believe the price that you have on that there, if I recall, was $4,000.
Forty-four.
Forty-four hundred, yeah. $4,400. Now, the one thing that I talked to Ron about today, and I talked to the engineer, is although this is something that is in similar scope for a contractor to do, and whatever you're bidding projects out, sometimes a smaller project is not worth, or it's more costly to do a smaller project than a larger project, because a lot of your cost is in mobilization of equipment. So you can pay a lot of money for somebody to bring out all the equipment that's needed to do something that might only take three or four hours to do. So there's a cost associated with that. In this case, the mobilization would be on Louise Court and Ryan Drive. It's not too far apart from one another, but Mason Run is totally different. It's in a different area, and it requires different equipment. So the point I'm getting at is, we might be better off going through the contractor that we're used to working with, and getting some prices for them to come in and take care of Mason Run, as opposed to including it in an overall bid price, where we might pay that mobile, mobilization, higher mobilization cost. So basically, what we would need tonight is for you guys to say you want to move forward with these projects, but in the meantime, we're going to see what kind of prices we can get from the people that we use locally to do Mason Run separately from that.
Commissioner Althanreth, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I want to make a motion that we approve approximately $48,455 to cover all three jobs. Louise Court is estimated at $14,300. Ryan Drive, approximately $30,000. That's asphalting from the cul-de-sac up to the last house that we had to repair, and that'll give that a, a nice top surface through there. We're not going to go and tear the whole road up and dig out everything at this time. We just, we don't have the money for it, and we feel that road, over the past year, has not created any real deep gullies, or, you know, the trash trucks, the school buses have run over it. So we're confident that we can go over top of that with a nice top coat at this time, give the residents a good ride, a road to drive on, and possibly have to come back and revisit that water line in the future. We know that all the house connections right now are good. We, between our guys and the contractors last year, replaced all those, so we feel pretty confident that we can go ahead and top coat that while the weather, you know, we're in the summertime, a good paving weather. The $4,400 is for the Mason Run, but that could, like you said, that's a small job. We may be able to get our own guys to do it, or our Meadows guys, who do a lot of work for us and treat us really good. So right now, I'll make a motion to approve $48,455 for the repair of Louise Court, Ryan Drive, and the Mason Run stormwater.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Calvin, do you have a discussion point?
Yeah, Commissioner Althanreth, I'm not sure if you were going to handle it in a separate motion, but you have the engineering cost.
That's what I was going to do, so that-
So we'll move forward. I did one discussion point. Does, does the repairs on Ryan Drive include those areas where those potholes keep developing? Are we going to, like, dig those out and pack them with stone and all that to try and eliminate that, because, I mean, no?
No. This is simply just a, a two-H. I mean, we've already made those repairs for the most part.
Okay.
This is just going to be a simple two-H overlay over the whole-
So we'll probably continue to deal with some issues up there?
Potentially. I mean, the, the road has been holding together so long, but-
It's been, it's been a year, so we, you know, we knew how much it was going to be to go in and do it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, unfortunately, is what it is. Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Commissioner Althanreth, do you have another motion?
One more. The engineering fees for preparing all the bid documents, for KCI going out and looking these jobs over for us like they always do, and preparing an estimate for us, so we know what we're looking at before we go out to bid. We have a $13,380 project engineering fees to KCI that I make a motion that we approve.
Can I get a-
I'm sorry, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this? Hearing none, all in favor, gentlemen?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we'll, we'll keep, you know, everybody updated as to when they're going to be doing that job, because as you know, once they get up there on Ryan Drive, we have to notify all the residents to, you know, when it's going to be done, so that we don't interfere with everybody going to work, coming to work. And it'd be really nice if we get in there before school starts, but it's, we're pushing it right now, but we're going to try.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Commissioner Althanreth, do you have any, I see under business meeting items, we have Cooper Avenue sidewalk repair.
Right, well, our guys, over the summer, have gone up on Cooper Avenue. We had a lot of residents contact us about the condition of sidewalks up there. We've had a lot of discussion over the past couple of years about sidewalks and responsibility. We've gone into some areas and fixed driveway aprons for residents, and we've done several sidewalk repairs. So Cooper Avenue, there were some sections on both sides of the streets the guys went in and worked on. It got delayed due to vacations, heat, the backhoe breaking down, but they've completed that work up there at this point. So next, what we want to move into is sidewalk responsibilities for repair. Calvin, you want to handle a little bit of that?
Sure.
It's something we've been talking about for a couple of years now, who's responsible, and how the, we can save some money on that.
For some of the veterans in the room that have come to town meetings for many years, you're familiar with this conversation that we're about to get into. And that is currently, the, and there's an ordinance in the town of Rising Sun that says that property owners are responsible for 50% of any sidewalk repairs. And fast-forwarding to today, in the litigious society that we live in, there's a lot of slip-and-trip lawsuits that get generated from people walking down the sidewalk and having issues and tripping and falling. And both the property owner and the town of Rising Sun, the way this language is written, there's a great deal of exposure for both parties, because on one hand, both parties are responsible for the repair, but there really isn't a mechanism in place of when that repair is going to take place. So the town did enact the property maintenance code a couple of months back, which talks about when a sidewalk is declared to be defective and needs to be repaired. So we solved that issue of the mechanism of when that has to take place or when it should take place. The other issue that we have is that the town started out with the concept of property owners being responsible for 50% of the repair, and in some cases, they billed some property owners in the past for 50% of that repair. I know since I've been here, I probably had maybe three or four property owners that on their own have contacted us about making the repair, but for the most part, the repairs don't get made, and we have some really bad sidewalks. And if you recall, we had KCI about a year and a half, two years ago, go, go out and do an extensive evaluation of all of our streets, all of our sidewalks, separate from the street, and all of our stormwater drains, and ranked them basically on a scale of one to three in terms of a priority of when we need to be paving streets, so we can budget for that in the future, what sidewalks need to be repaired, and what storm drains need to be cleaned. So we, we got that. We have the mechanism now of having a good idea of what the conditions are out there. But over the years, the town has taken many different initiatives and different ways of paving streets and redoing sidewalks, which has led the town, to some degree, to be inconsistent in the way it has been applying this ordinance in terms of who's responsible for the repair. And some of it was done for some justifiable reasons, because if you imagine being in the middle of the row of 10 houses, and you're house number five in the middle of that row, and the town decides to come in and repave the street, but in order to repave the street, it makes sense to redo the curbing, and if you, anyone who's in construction knows that if you have a monolithic poured sidewalk, which means the curb and the sidewalk are all one unit, if you pave the street and then come along to have to replace the sidewalk, you have to dig up the street that you just paved in order to fix that monolithic sidewalk. So you're throwing good money after bad when you do it that way. So for those reasons, the town has come along and hypothetically taken that street of 10 houses and replaced all the sidewalks, even though you located in the middle of that, didn't have a problem with your sidewalk. And so it created a little bit of an unfairness of the town showing up after a major repaving project and saying, oh, here's your bill for 50% of the sidewalk because we fixed it, and the homeowner naturally is going to say, well, there was nothing wrong with my sidewalk. Why do I have to pay for that? And so the town, as I said, has done numerous paving and sidewalk repair work over the last couple of years that previous elected bodies, and this is where the veterans in the room remember these conversations all the time, of saying, okay, you're creating this inequity here going forward, and you need to address it. So in the, in reality, the, the same way a property owner, an argument can be made, an argument can be made, that in the reality that a property owner is responsible for the safety of pedestrians walking on that sidewalk when there's too much snow and ice on it, that property owner is responsible for that. They're responsible for it legally, and they're responsible for it civilly. So the same argument can be made, and many communities do make this argument, that the property owner is also responsible for the repair of the sidewalk. And if you borrow the phrase, or if you subscribe to the idea that curb appeal in real estate is the way you look at the property and how it appeals to a potential buyer, fixing sidewalks in front of a home has a direct financial impact to that property owner. So the theory is, if taxpayers on one side of the town are in essence paid for the repair of a single sidewalk in front of somebody's house, the people that are benefiting that, from that directly are that homeowner, who now had somebody else spend money to fix that sidewalk in front of their house. So there's a, a variety of arguments that get made, that many communities have made, of getting out of the business of sidewalk repair and putting it on the property owner to make those repairs. But the town of Rising Sun has got sort of a, you know, whenever you make a transition into something, there's always some rough bumps. We're seeing that in the, you know, in what we're doing with the, the utility bills and the tax bills. So there's always that rough bump. So one of the ways to get around this is to, if the town wants to move forward with making it the responsibility of property owners to maintain those sidewalks, because this is what property owners can do, when they go to put a deck behind their house or a pool or an addition, and the contractor has a choice of how he's going to get the backhoe in there, he can drive over the sidewalk, hypothetically crack it, and other taxpayers are now going to pay for the repair of that sidewalk under the model that we have now. If in the wintertime it comes time to remove the snow and ice, they can throw materials out there that are not good for concrete. We all read the warning labels on what we put on our sidewalks that says, this is safe for sidewalks. Well, if something happens to the sidewalks, the taxpayers are paying, the taxpayers at large are paying for that repair. If somebody had a fit of frustration because the town, and we've seen this happen, the town gets complaints about snow and ice on the sidewalk, somebody gets mad, they go out there with a big old pinch bar, and they start walking around busting the ice off it, and they're chipping the concrete and spouting it and damaging it, hypothetically, the taxpayers at large pay for that. So that all goes into the pot of, should the property owner be responsible for that? So in moving forward, a way, a recommended way to do this fairly, if the board would want to make it- want to make it the responsibility of property owners to maintain their sidewalks, is for the town to take the study that was done in terms of what sidewalks are good and what sidewalks are not good. We would also send our people out for about a week and a half and reevaluate that because it's been about a year, and we would identify the properties that there's no issue between property line to property line, take a picture of it, and send a letter to that property owner saying, you are now responsible for this sidewalk going forward. Any of the properties that have defective sidewalks, as opposed to us now coming in and maybe hypothetically, you know, having them incur a bill that maybe they're not ready for at that particular moment because quite frankly, we're going to want to get an economy of scale, and if we've got six or seven properties all lined up at one time, we're going to want to have a contractor come in and give us a bid price, remember the mobilization of equipment, and do an entire street. So, instead of getting people jammed up with having that bill, the town would just pay for the repair of all defective sidewalks that we've identified from this point forward, fix them, and then send a letter to the property owner saying, now you are responsible for this sidewalk going forward. So, that is, you know, that's been kicked around for many years. Every time we go about repairing sidewalks, we have the question of are you turning it over to the property owner? Why am I paying for this? I don't, I don't walk down that street. Why does my taxpaying money have to pay for that sidewalk? So, that's one way of getting around it. To recap, it would be, we would identify sidewalks that are good, send a letter to the property owner saying, you are now responsible, identify properties that the sidewalks are not good and need to be repaired, put them on a replacement schedule. That could take two or three years for us to do, admittedly, but at least we're going on the record now with that property owner saying, we're going to take responsibility for it. So, that's, again, is a discussion that's been kicked around for many years, and it comes back to you guys again because we are aggressively repairing sidewalks.
Calvin?
Are we looking at the currently, the ones that are monolithic, monolithic pour and, you know, changing those, pouring the curbs, we own the curb and then they own the sidewalk? I mean, how are we looking to handle like that, for example?
I think if you do a monolithic pour, there's pros and cons of monolithic pour. I think from, from a benefit to the homeowner long-term, and it's an expense for the town now, a, an independent curb is actually a better scenario for the homeowner in the future.
I agree.
Because in order to replace the monolithic sidewalk, as we said, now you've got to dig into the street. So, if we turn these sidewalks over to somebody in ten years from now, they got to replace it, the only way to replace it is to dig into the street.
Right.
So, I would like to see as where possible be pouring independent curbs to give the resident a break in the future.
I understand. And are we looking at before we turn over, like these repairs that we're doing, are we looking to go to an independent curb as we do them, and then a separate sidewalk so that we're turning over? I mean, I'm...
So, if I hear you asking me, if we have identified a property that the sidewalk is fine, but it's a monolithic pour, are we going to put a, a separate curb in? Is that what you're asking me?
That's a second question.
Because if you're not, that is a question.
That, that's a second question. I mean, that is a separate question. I was actually asking the ones where we're doing, you know, where we identified we need to do a repair. And right now, you know, I mean, because we've got monolithic pours, I mean, take Cooper, for example, we're, we're, and I've seen we've dug up the street along there to fix that.
Yeah.
So, while we're doing that, are we separating the curb from the sidewalk so that going forward, it's not an issue for that homeowner as we turn it over to him?
I think that works. If we run into a street that has multiple sidewalks that are bad, you could do that, but it's really hard to pour, pour an independent curb, you know, one section, independent curb, and the rest on each side, monolithic pour. So, we would have to make a decision. If we go into a section that is monolithic pour and we have some repairs, you might be saying, well, that's just on an economy of scale, we'll place them all and go to independent curb. That would have to be a case-by-case decision because of financial limitations.
Okay.
And that's, that's one of the problems on Wilson, because you have a curb at the end, you have a curb at the top, and they pour one solid concrete all the way, you know? So, now the road is, is falling apart where they dug into the road.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've talked about this.
Right. In, in, in that particular case, in that particular case, we would probably package a road restoration on top of doing the curb, because we would be digging, to fix that situation, we're going to be digging into the road again anyway. So, at that point, we'd have to rebuild the road and put the independent curb in, and then the sidewalk. But that would be a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I think there's multiple spots in town that have that situation.
Oh, well, we can't do that on Wilson because you live on Wilson.
I'm talking about everybody in general. I just know that because it's right in front of my house and the road's falling apart. There's many other locations, you know what I mean? I'm not going to pretend that I'm not ticked about it because I am. I mean, it's just...
All right, so we need to put this in form of a motion, Calvin? Or do we just need to direct you?
If, if it's something you feel comfortable with doing tonight, fine. If not, you can ask me to get more information.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to put it into motion.
But I think we've got, we can, if we need to make it into a motion at the next meeting, if we need to come up with language, we could do it by then. I think now it's informational to let the residents know what we're planning on doing. You know, with the increase in property tax, residents want to know, what, what am I going to get for this? And, and you're going to get some, you know, the guy's been out there doing sidewalks. As you know, we've got four public works guys that do the work of, of a larger crew on top of, you know, picking up yard waste every Monday throughout the year and everything else they do. So, we, Ron needs to see the evaluation that was done by KCI a year ago where they came in and did all that, and, and just like you guys said, some of these are case-by-case because right across the street out here, from the bank, when that was all done down through there, that was a long, brand-new monolithic pour down through there, I'm pretty sure. So, we got some of those, and it's not something we're going to fix this summer, but we can identify them and, like in our neighborhoods, we, we've got the curb, we've got the little grassy area and sidewalks.
They could easily turn those over.
So, there's areas like that that we can identify and solve now.
Yeah.
And notify the residents so that you're being, you know, it's about being fair that somebody fixing ours is not paying for it at the other side of town. So, we can get started on that at this time, I think.
Well, two things. One, it's an ordinance change.
Yeah.
Because you'd have to go into the ordinance to change the language that says the property owner is responsible for fifty percent of it. So, you'd be changing the ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. So, at the next meeting, if we need to make specific motions and stuff, we can identify it then.
Well, I would think we would want to direct Calvin, if we are comfortable with it, to come up with the change first and have it ready to decide whether or not we're going to vote on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Is that okay?
By the next meeting.
Yeah. The one thing, let me, let me say this, and, you know, forgive me for saying this, but I do think it's very important to say, that is the endeavor that you guys took in this budget process. I mean, we saw what's happening to our property values, and we need to invest, and this is all part of the investment. This stuff is not going to take care of itself. And for many years, for a variety of reasons, the town has not been in a position to be able to deal with its infrastructure. We've done a lot of street repaving lately, that that adds value to your community. The next thing is our sidewalks, and it costs money to do that. And you guys have tried to be creative by, you know, putting in the budget another employee to stop having to pay these kind of contractor costs to do certain things. I mean, Cooper Avenue, our people did it in-house for about a thousand dollars of material costs, working basically nine to five. You would have paid, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars easily for a contractor to come in and do that. So, that's why you guys have been trying to take the fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year and redirect that towards personnel and equipment so you could do more with that money. So, that's all part of this.
All right. Calvin, I got a question. So, following this, I don't know, like Cooper, for instance, fifteen years from now, somebody's going to have to replace their sidewalks, and they're going to have to pay. And of course, they don't want to. They don't want to pay, and then it's something, that provision would the town come in and replace the sidewalks and charge them?
Yes, under the property maintenance code, you would be able to do that.
Okay. Do we want to do a motion to direct you to come up with a charter change?
Not charter.
Not a charter change, a ordinance change, excuse me?
Yeah.
Yes?
If you'd like to do that, yeah.
Do you want to do a motion?
Okay, make, make a motion that, I make a motion, we direct the town administrator to draft an ordinance, adopt, to adopt, that will outline the inspection of sidewalks and the determination of whether to turn it over to the homeowner at that time or at a later date. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
I do. I still, I, I'm still not comfortable with it. I'm just telling you that right now. I, I still think there's too many liability issues. I, I just, so, just putting that out there. So, you guys vote on it, but I'll be voting against it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
Just for, for note-taking, were you a no vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
And this is just to draft an ordinance, not, I mean, that's all we're talking about.
It's not adopting anything.
Right, right. Just drafting an ordinance. Okay.
Okay. All right. Citizens input. Chief? I meant citizens input, it's okay. You were probably napping, it's okay.
Stay with the group.
All right. Would anyone else, would anyone like to speak this evening? Hearing none. All right, we're going to move forward into, the chief said he does not have a report this evening, so town administrator, do you have a report this evening?
No, I'll take the matter off. I'm good.
Wow.
Yeah.
You sure? Rising Sun Historical Commission, no report. Rising Sun Arts Alliance, do they have a report?
No, they do not.
No, okay. Any old business?
Um, yeah, mayor, we've got us, old business as far as the Freedom of Information Act requests.
Okay.
That the towns are receiving. So, basically, I've got a prepared statement for this, but to give, we've got multiple Freedom of Information Act requests, and I mean, some of them are quite honestly illegible, and most of them don't actually even fall within the purview of the law, and a lot of these things basically take a lot of time, a lot of time researching, so at some point the town has to pay an attorney or pay the accountant fees, and, you know, to do research, the law provides, you know, two hours' worth of research, but then after that, you know, we're in current expenses, and you can actually charge back the person that's requesting. Some of these requests could be anything from, what's the mileage on your dump truck, which doesn't fall under accordance, you know, what was the legal and administrative cost for, of the civil case against Sandra Deidra? You know, and there's many different things like that. So, basically, in the past few weeks, the towns received several requests for information from Mr. Fisher. It's clear that despite the numerous requests he has made over time and the responses he has given, Mr. Fisher does not understand the parameters of the state law on the subject. The Public Information Act is not an open question, answer provision to local government. It is a request for documents which are in the possession of the local government. It does not require a local government to prepare the information requested, but rather provide the necessary components so that the requister could find the information that is needed. While this seems like a simple task, it's not. It requires time and effort for an employee to find documents that may address the scope of requests, especially since most of the requests are vague, broad, and open-ended. For example, one of Mr. Fisher's requests made on July twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen contained eight individual items. Only one of the eight items is actually something that can be provided under the act, and this item requires significant time, research, to amass the information needed to be provided so the applicant can discern the answer. An additional request was filed on August second, two thousand and sixteen of the three items listed. Only the second item is something that can be researched and obtained. The first item was just too vague to answer, and the third item is not a document which can be obtained. One of the things we've been discussing is actually following this more towards the letter of the law, and when someone provides a request, if, depending how complicated the requests are, some of them are simple, you know, the first two hours is free. After that, we're able to actually provide a charge for, if we've got to get the attorney involved, if it's a request for financials where we have to incur expenses for Wagner and Associates for several hours, all that's billable. And one of the things we've actually discussed is actually putting an escrow in place for something like, maybe someone like Mr. Fisher that has multiple requests, so he actually can pay upfront, and then we can draw that down and provide the information he requests.
Okay. Do we have a statement to give Mr. Fisher?
Oh, yes.
All right. Moving forward, any new business? Hearing none. My report will be pretty brief this evening. I did attend the Cecil County Fair. I was lucky enough to do an interview with WXCY regarding some of the events that will be going on within our community. I was very excited to do that. They want me to come back and also speak to them about future events coming up throughout the year. So, I want to thank Brad Austin very much for inviting me to do that. I also spent some time doing what was supposed to be goat milking. It actually turned into a training cow milking and obstacle course with a goat. I came in second in that opportunity. The Cecil County FCA Director, Brian Hanson, beat me out with his milking skills, so, and he actually beat me out also with his time in the obstacle course, so a big shout out to him. But it was a lot of fun to get out there. We had different community leaders, including Jackie Gregory, who's going to be on the county council this upcoming fall, as well as other community leaders that came out, so a big shout out to them. Myself and the Board of Commissioners all attended a grand opening for Bigfoot Subs, and we did a ribbon cutting for Mr. Milton McAllister. It is a beautiful, state-of-the-art facility that he has built there. I mentioned, you know, from the ashes, they have risen bigger, better than ever. It is a great restaurant, so I invite all of our residents to go out and see it, but a big shout out to them and his staff, and we wish them many years of success within the town of Rising Sun. So, that concludes my report. Commissioner Althanry?
I have no comments, no further comments.
All right. Commissioner LaShir?
I've got no further comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Shepard?
I have no comments either.
Commissioner Warnock?
I'm ruining the perfect record. I have one thing.
Okay.
Nice and simple. Next movie's in the park is August nineteenth. It is being held at Kilby Cream, not at the Richardson Park on Main Street. So, again, that's at Kilby Cream at eight-thirty. I've already been over there, and we've surveyed the area, and they actually have an area that's almost like a stadium-style seating. It's just going to work perfectly. It's, it's, it's a large area, it'll accommodate a lot of people, so it's kind of excited this will be something a little different, and we're waiting to see how the turnout is, and Kilby...
You're showing...
We are showing Zootopia, and Kilby Cream is the sponsor of, of that movie. So, big thanks to Kilby Cream for not only being the host, but also the sponsor of the movie. And, and Zootopia is not about zoo, interestingly enough. I kind of thought, just from the title, it actually looks kind of like a good movie. It's a cartoon. It's about animals that live in a city, I guess, but anyway. I encourage people, well, we'll put the trailer out shortly on what the movie's about.
Absolutely, on social media.
So, and with that, that is all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Commissioner Althanry, do you want to remind about the planning commission?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Recently, the planning commission had elections of officers, so I want to congratulate Pauline Braun, who is now our new chairman for planning and zoning board. Don't forget, she's not here, but Susie Hemmer is our new vice chairman for the planning and zoning board. So, come out and see us once in a while, and we look forward to Pauline and Susie taking the lead, and we look like we're going to be getting very busy in this upcoming year with the things that are coming down the pike, so. The next meeting is Monday, August the fifteenth at six-thirty P.M.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Althanry. Is there any more business to come for the board this evening? Hearing none, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So, moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Hating adjourned.